All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Sorry to interrupt the fellowship. Welcome, everybody, to our July meeting of the Springdale School Board. We will start our meeting off with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Sorry to interrupt the fellowship. Welcome, everybody, to our July meeting of the Springdale School Board. We will start our meeting off with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Cleveland, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir. There was just a typo. If you look under the presentation, it's dependent and you go to that practical activities. Number three, we have August the second, but it's really August the seventh. We just made a typo. I think we've corrected that in your calendars. Just wanted to make someone aware, if they look at the agenda, it needs to be August the seventh.
Okay. All right. Anything else? I will entertain a motion.
I have a motion by Mrs. Creek and a second by Mrs. Cook to approve the agenda as voted.
All those in favor? Opposed? All right, that brings us to our consent agenda, which has our... Well, does anybody have any questions about the consent agenda? We have our school board meeting minutes from June. Our district curriculum, did everybody have a chance to review that?
Just to say that curriculum is just a continuation from last year.
Okay. And then our new hire report. Any questions?
I emailed you the up-to-date that Miss... Yes, sir. That Miss Hobbs provided today. So that's up to the minute.
Okay. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Hutchinson and a second by Mr. Ramos. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, Dr. Cleveland.
As I was telling Mr. Bell just a second ago, it's always best. I like this time best when we celebrate kids. We've got some really awesome people in the room tonight. I'd like to invite Coach Fimple up to the podium to celebrate these young people.
Yes, these are very easy speeches to celebrate when you have a state runner-up and a state champion from the same school here at Harvard that got to compete against, you know, in a tournament. What was really neat about it is that as the boys were playing the state championship, the girls softball team came in and watched for a little bit, and then vice versa. After the state championship baseball game, the baseball team went and sat on the hill at UCA to watch the softball team. Great camaraderie. It's an unbelievable celebration when these things happen, and so I'm gonna step out of the way. I'm gonna introduce Dustin Helm Camp, Harvard baseball, 2024 state champions.
All right, thank you for having us, the board. Thank you, Dr. Cleveland, and your admin team for your support, and Coach Fimple and his staff, and Dr. Greek, who's awesome to work for. It's just a great community all the way around to be a part of that admin team and just their support. But a little bit about these guys and their season. It was one of the more unique ones, I felt like, that I've been a part of. From the angle, we had a lot of growth to do as far as bonding as a team, getting to know one another. And it's kind of like I said at the end-of-the-year banquet for our team, more so than any, it felt like with this team, we did a lot of life just in everything that you encounter. Not that we haven't in the past, but there's just different things that happened in this year that were, you know, different and unique. And, you know, I listed a deal of about fifty words that I thought that we went through throughout this year, but, you know, more important, you know, we understood the power of the prayer. We saw a miracle this year with one of our parents, and, you know, we saw the loss of a loved one. And rallying around that, from failure to success, the whole thing. Critics, you know, they started one and three and finished the year twenty-nine and two. And went on a fourteen-game winning streak and a fifteen-game winning streak. And three-point-eight team GPA. You know, they're just exceptional young men, and at times, more mature than a lot of adults, just in how they handle failure, intense situations. I love them to death. It's been an honor and a blessing to be around them and get to coach them. There were eleven academic All-Americans on this team. Ten of them have signed to play. Seniors have signed. It was truly an honor to get to be a part of it.
We have a ninth-grade baseball... I mean, we have tryouts tonight over at Harvard. That's why all the coaches are dressed. We're not actually playing a game. We're actually, they're having a tryout at Harvard. So I looked at us, I thought, man, this guy's coming for war, but I forgot about the tryout they're doing tonight and tomorrow. Next will be our Harvard softball. Incredible year. Hired a guy at McDonald's one day. Great team. Girls did an excellent job, bought in. It was really fun to watch these guys, you know, these ladies grow. Introduce Randy Oz as head coach.
I was really hoping that Coach Helm Camp would stay in here for a little while, 'cause I will tell you this. Coming in to a new school system, of course, much larger than what I was accustomed to at a previous place of employment, it was just different. And I know in the past, it sounded like the door from my office to the baseball office had always been shut. So the very first day, I went in and opened up his door so we could walk back and forth and I could torment those guys. They're a lot younger than I am. We had a great time. Those guys kind of took me in and showed me everything was going on within those facilities, and I can't thank them enough. We had a great time when we walked in to see the baseball game at the state championship. These girls were given a standing ovation, which was just awesome by the community. I can tell you this, from day one, walking in here, whether it be at Harvard or wherever we went to present our softball team, we rented a great people. I thoroughly enjoyed it, and I can tell you this, this bunch behind me is phenomenal. I recognize the coaches first. I was gonna have them stand up, but they all jumped up here like the baseball team. I guess they want to get out there and take pictures with them, so we'll get this going. Coach Waters, Coach Waters over here on the side. Yeah, we can step out if you want to do that. All right. Coach Kylie Buttram. Coach Honesty Holt, who is a volunteer assistant, who is interning in the athletic department this year. You know, it's kind of tough. I did the same thing back when I started. She doesn't get paid. We throw her a T-shirt every once in a while, but she's there almost on a daily basis. Plus, she works and goes to school. Just finished up her masters, I believe. And we're very proud of her. We're gonna have her again this next year, and hopefully you guys will hire her in years to come. Go right down the list here, so I don't forget anybody. Chloe Mottlin. I am gonna do this. I'm gonna have you guys stand around. There you go. Emma Helt. Zaria Palmer. Sarah Dotz. Savannah Mouse. Riley Wolf. Riley Bratcher. Belle Haney. Zilmares Sanchez. The girls can step in front of each other, too, if you like. There you go. Savannah Woods. Jasmine Thomas. Haven Peterson. Madison Little. Reyna Ariola. Kylie Burris. Peter Guzman. Olivia Tingley. Becca Bramble. And Kaitlyn Dotz. And I hope that you take my apologies for reading the sign lately just once before in front of the C-Hall, much known by a girl. We always call them by their nicknames. And all of a sudden, I got to, and I just locked up. And I had to go past her and then come back a little bit later when I remembered her name. So we weren't gonna forget anybody today. I know you kind of want to hear about our season. I'm gonna do something a little bit different than what Coach Helm Camp did. We have four of our five seniors here, and Coach Waters called me today and said, hey, I'm gonna go out and have lunch with three of them. Would you like to come out, you know, come have lunch with us? Which is very unique. We hope that we carry on these relationships for many, many years. But I'm gonna let these seniors come up and talk about the season to you guys instead of me telling you.
Do they know they're coming out?
I thought it was a super-successful season. I sure grew as a player. I grew my love for softball back, for sure. Coach O taught me a lot that I didn't think I was gonna be able to relearn. And I'm just really proud of us and, like, the team that we've become. And even though we didn't get the turnout we may have wanted, I still love the season, but yeah.
What's your plans?
My plans? I'm going to the University of Arkansas to major in biology. Yes, sir.
It was definitely the best season I've had so far. I loved meeting all the girls. I loved getting the relationship with them, especially with the coaches, knowing I have people I can still text and see if I can go hang out with them and that. And then just, it was a really great season, and I'm so excited for them in the future.
What's your plans?
I'm going to the U of A to study psychology.
I think that this is probably my favorite season that we've had all my four years. The girls and the, like, just the bond we all had was really good, and I feel like no one ever really had drawn with anybody, and we were all just kind of really, we were one team, and it was really good to finally have people to bond with like that.
And you're going to...
I'm gonna do cosmetology school in Little Rock at Paul Mitchell.
Awesome.
I think our season was really great. I think we all grew as not just players, but as people, because I definitely did. And I gained so many friendships from this, so it was really fun for me. Like last year.
Same question.
I think I'm gonna take classes online.
I wish I had a picture on my phone. I wish I'd pulled it up. There's certain things besides softball that you want to accomplish within the team, and especially with the seniors, and, you know, there's a couple of them come in each day before practice, and of course, we'll talk about the future and what's going on and so on. And I'm not gonna name names, but I had one that did not have her driver's license yet. And so we wanted to make sure that, you know, by the end of the season, she received her driver's license, and so it was like one of those daily situations. And, you know, like I said, I wish I had my phone up your way to show it, but one of both. Has her driver's license now, and we're real proud of that. I can tell you this, I mean, you take an old retired coach, and like Coach Fimple said, it only took a Big Mac and surprise at McDonald's to get me over here, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. It was a very rewarding season, and I can tell you this, these four right here in Austin, Kylie, mean the world to us, and we appreciate what they did, and we're very excited for what the rest of this bunch, and a few of these others that are back here in the back, are planning on doing this upcoming season. We thank you guys.
That was my question. So you've got four seniors and...
Well, actually, we have five, yes.
So you have a lot left. So what's y'all's confidence level that next year you'll be champions?
This bunch does not lack in confidence. And the young ones coming in are about the same way, so we're very excited about the upcoming season. Thank you very much for supporting us. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it again. I'll just close it up real quick. We'll get a picture. It actually was just a cup of coffee. He wasn't that cheap. Good night, appreciate you guys. Man, that cleared out the lane.
We have to go back to Kansas City. We came home just...
You ready everybody off?
They're our true friends, who's left.
Okay. It is. I'd like to introduce, actually, why can't you? Introduce your new team member.
Good evening, Dr. Cleveland and board. I'm super excited tonight to be able to introduce to you guys Heather Tyler. She is our new specialized supervisor, and we are getting Heather back from Bentonville. She started with us for a couple of years at Young and then ventured to Bentonville for a little bit to do some leadership opportunities that she had up there, and we've got her back. And so we are super excited. I think she's gonna be a wonderful addition to our team, and so I'm excited for you guys to meet Heather Tyler.
So, of course, I want to thank you all, Dr. Cleveland. I mean, today's day two of being back, but I'm definitely knowing it's good to be back, like, the culture, everybody, just the team. Like, that teamwork at their age level, we all feel it as adults, right? But, you know, I'm just, I'm honored to be back and the experiences I have now. But I am a parent of a child who has unique learning differences. She's on the autism spectrum, and so I know firsthand how important it is that we all work together, teachers, district leadership, and collaboratively do it to support students and the families, 'cause I'm a family piece to it, and I'm still learning. Like, I have the education I need, but I'm still learning lots of things. So, you know, my goal is to support and contribute what's already going on here, because I know I've lived here, I know I've taught here, I know what's going on. Just the inclusivity, all the effort that we're throwing at that, and we're doing it strategically. So my overall goal, and I said it to Dr. Cleveland when I got to visit with him, everybody should have the opportunity to contribute and to be productive and have a fulfilled life as a citizen in our community. And like, as a parent, I cannot tell you, she's about to be sixteen next year. My struggles are so different than what they had been, right? So just, again, thank you, and like, I am honored. You cannot believe, like, pulling up over here, I'm six miles from the house, I'm like, yes, more of this, more of this. But anyway, thank you, guys, and day two's going great. Anyway, y'all have a good night.
Welcome back. Next, we have to introduce Ms. Kim Lockridge. She's unable to be here tonight, but she's our new assistant principal for our pre-K. Ms. Lockridge had been here before. She was an assistant principal years ago at Lee Elementary School. And she married a football coach, and football coaches sometimes move, right? And so at this particular time, her husband, Doug Lockridge, is the head coach at Solox Brakes. Great guy, former A.D. at Alma, where she also served as a principal. She's an excellent, excellent administrator, very seasoned, very brilliant, and I think will really add to the value of our pre-K team. So we're fortunate to have her, former principal, now as an assistant principal. So we'll get her in front of you at some point, for those of you that don't know her, and we'll make sure that you have a good relationship with her when you meet her, 'cause that'll just happen. Next, we have personnel report. Dr. Smith and Ms. Hopkins, and of course, Dee Hobbs, who's wonderful. Always does a really good job pulling our numbers together. But just as comparative, last year was a phenomenal year, not necessarily in a great way, in that we hired a lot of people. We had some ESR funds to deal with, we had some ASIs, which were those support systems to help reduce the loss of learning. But we had to hire a lot of people. It seemed like we had an inordinate number of people who resigned, lots of movement. You know, learns was pretty spooky for folks without knowing what was going on. But this last year, we had a really solid year. We hired some great people, and we've had fewer resignations and fewer retirements this year. And it's translated into the comparative of two-hundred-and-fourteen certified people last year at August this time. I think we wound up at two-forty or so, which was the most I've ever hired among Tyler, with a hundred-and-forty-four classified. This year, to date, we're at a hundred-and-thirty-one certified and sixty classified. Also to note, there have been some efforts, really, in making sure that we're not overstaffed. So we've been fairly stable with our student enrollment, and with that, we've taken each position where somebody did retire or resign, and we've made sure that position was necessary in order to refill it. And of course, I gotta give credit to the principals and to Dr. Smith, Ms. Feenke, and Ms. Tisher for really having a quality handle on each position in the district. You start talking to one of them about it, they know exactly how many people are where and who's teaching what, and that's just a tremendous asset. So kudos to all the principals, to kudos to the team in that effort. We still are going to hire some more, I have no doubt, but at this point, I think most of the districts around, unless someone is elevating to a new position, like a teacher to an IAF or assistant principal or something, most districts, if you sign a contract, you're there. So that's a good thing, but we will always individually, if someone has a real need, we'll really focus on making sure that that person is addressed and, like, you know, we let people go when it's a severe need. And I hate to ever hold anybody back or not need a need for someone. We care about our staff. Anyway, that's personnel report. Any questions?
Do you have the total? Not just new hires, but the total?
Well, the total, the number of staff that we totally have, I just have the new hires tonight, Ms. Ramos, but I will be glad to send you the entire package. You know, we had the, we had that Excel spreadsheet for, in April, when we hired everybody back, but I'm happy to send that to you. In fact, I should have had that in there tonight, so I apologize about that. We'll get that. We're down about, Dr. Smith, where are you? About sixty from last year. So, anyway, but I'll get that to you. In fact, if you'll make a note of it, we'll see if we can get that tonight. Get it to you before meetings are over. Okay. Back-to-school activities. We are in the middle of July. To me, it is if school has started. Our assistants are back, most of our, all of our other administrators are back, and, you know, our phones are blowing up with issues. Mr. White's phone is blowing up about things that are needed in the building, and so it's really good and fun to be back. I can tell you that. Jeremy's really excited, so. All right, Jeremy? But there's a lot to happen. So the first real event that'll happen for us is July the twenty-sixth at eight o'clock in the morning. We're gonna meet at DCSOI in the East Cafeteria, and that's what Dr. Smith affectionately calls your day, Dr. Cleveland. So that's where I'm able to visit with all of the staff, with all the administrators, and kind of set the tone for the year. I can tell you that Secretary Aliva has been invited. He's confirmed that he will try to attend, but it might be a last-minute thing. He'll be there. I can also tell you that you all are invited for breakfast, you're invited for lunch. You can stay all day if you like. But this year, for lunch, it's a real surprise, but it ought to be a wild time. We've, my brother-in-law's coming back, and he loves to cook for people, and it ought to be an interesting time. So we'll have regular hamburgers and hot dogs for people who aren't quite ready for the wild days. So we'll see. You're certainly welcome to be there. We'll have lunch at about eleven-thirty, which will last about an hour. But it should be a good time, and a lot of good information. On August the first at eight o'clock at George Keener High, we're gonna have our new teacher orientation. So this year, it'll be fewer people, obviously, but Dame and Donnell's gonna help lead a lot of that, and of course, all of our assistant superintendents will be there. There's a lot of them that will be there as well. Certainly are invited to come at eight o'clock in the morning. In fact, it's been customary that the presidents come and welcome to everyone, so Mr. Emerson, if you're able to do that, that'll be great. Any other board members, certainly welcome to attend as well. And then our typo, number three, on August the seventh at seven-thirty, from seven-thirty to twelve-fifteen or so at the high school, at Springdale High School, we're gonna have our chamber event. So that will be held in the new arena. And the new arena has like twenty-three-hundred or so seats. There's all, obviously, standing room and everything else, but we're gonna have the entire... But we're going to have the entire, entire body, teaching body, administrative staff there for the chamber breakfast. It's the first time we've been able to put them all back together in a long time. So that'll happen. We'll also have our ribbon cutting. It's the first real event that'll be held in the new arena. So the chamber's planning and I think you have access to calendar events, what's going to happen at the end. But the vendor's going to set up in the old gym, throughout the school. And then at a certain time, people will be transitioned to the arena. It ought to be really good. It'd be nice and cool. Everyone will be able to see and hear. So we're looking forward to that day and we're very thankful for the chamber for helping us with this ribbon cutting. So you're all invited and hopefully you can attend. We'll try to not be too burdensome on your time. But it'd be really great to have a picture and that kind of thing if possible to open that facility. On August the 12th, our students return. And that's a, that's a big day. On August the 8th, we have at one o'clock in SHS PDC, our district's back school. So that is always a time that our choir, our adult choir is able to sing and perform. It's a, to me, a jubilant time. The only thing is, it's a stressor for me because I have to do a lot of speaking. But this year, it should be a lot of fun. Dr. Smith and the whole team have a lot of things planned for me. And as a good steward, I follow their direction. So it should be a lot of fun. I think I might even sing and attend this year. I may have to live to.
I'll skip this one.
I wouldn't skip it. I wouldn't skip it. I need to skip it. Okay. We also have the ADE Summit update. Ms. Fink and Mr. Emerson participated in that. In fact, if you'll come, Ms. Fink, reports I received from people across the state that attended said that they did a remarkable job and that Mr. Emerson represented you really, really well, so.
Let me ask a question about the chamber event.
Yes, sir.
You said there will be a ribbon cutting to dedicate the building between the 7:30 and 9:00.
Right at the beginning.
Oh, at 9:30?
Yes, sir. Sorry, I wasn't clear about my time at 7:30. It's whenever we show up there. I think we transitioned from 7:30 to 7:45 somewhere in there.
I think this was, you emailed to us and there's a link you can click on.
Oh. So the chamber.
Oh, and there's a printout, yep.
But it doesn't say anything about the ribbon cutting.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay. And Dr. Smith said there, I'll watch you the last details for them. So they'll add that since that's a working document.
All right. Well, good evening, Board. Dr. Cleveland. I am very excited to announce that our team was able to present at the DESI Summit. We were invited to present on how the board relations in our district allowed us to be able to implement a district-wide PLC model. And so Mr. Emerson was gracious enough to go with us and present from the boardroom to the classroom impacting student achievement. We had approximately 20 to 25 people in attendance. They were very engaged in the material that we were presenting. And I know Mr. Emerson's presence was very welcomed. We were actually told by several people that he really gave the work that we were doing credibility. He did an amazing job presenting the information and representing you very well. So Mr. Emerson, would you like to give any comments about the PLC presentation at the ADE Summit?
I thought it went well. I mean, all I did was explain our relationship with our admin team and how I think it's unique. And we work well together. We see each other as teammates. I think that's why we're successful. Explain the PLC process a little bit from my point of view as far as being introduced to it and learning what it was and being educated on it and then all of us getting on board with it and having a kind of united front to implement it. And I think that it's working and at some point we'll have good data to show that it is some point.
He did an amazing job. You guys would be very, very proud of him. Additionally, the Department of Education asked us to come and present on the High Impact Tutoring Grant. I think I presented the outcomes of this particular program a couple of months ago. It's the partnership we have with the University of Arkansas and Westwood Elementary where we piloted the grant program, the tutoring grant program and had amazing data to show from it. And so that has caught a lot of popularity within the state and we have become a model for what that could look like. So we were asked to go to the summit and present that information. So that was a really good experience as well. I am happy to announce that that program will be expanding next year to six elementary schools in our district. That partnership with the University of Arkansas will continue to grow and we've been funded for that to continue for next year. Do you have any questions for me? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Fink. Of course, the reason why we didn't have our board meeting last week is because you allowed me to represent not only our district, but the state at our AAAS governing board meeting in Washington, DC. So I was tickled to get to go do that. I applied for our reimbursement to AAAS. I applied yesterday, but had a good report. I emailed you all a copy of what I sent to Congressman Womack. I have to brag on him a minute. He knew I was coming, but he had a very busy week. He was in budgets, which he has responsibility for, and they were doing all kinds of marketing. So it was probably a 10 to 12 hour day for him. But he told me what time to come over and I did. And he stepped out of a meeting that he was leading and spent about 15 minutes with Mr. Chris Nell, or Dr. Chris Nell. He's the superintendent at BBR Arkansas. He's also a representative for the state. So there's two of us. But he talked to us. I was anxious about Title I and Title II funding. There's been conversation across the country about cutting title funds. One was cutting it to 25% of all Title I funding. That would be catastrophic for school districts across the country and to completely do away with Title II. And I was assured by Congressman Womack. He said, Jared, this is pretty much how it works. He said, there'll be, there'll be a position from the House and it's going to be pretty conservative. There'll be a position from the Senate and it won't be. And we're going to all meet together and we'll knock it out and you're not going to see any kind of negative effects to Title I or Title II. Fair, in fact, you might not see any increases, but you probably won't see any decreases. And he said, I feel pretty confident about that. And I take him at his word. He did, he did a great job and he really helped me understand a little bit better about the budget process. And I was appreciative of that. I also got to talk to him about Special Ed Dollars, IDEA. IDEA is only funded at a 13% level federally. They have committed to funding it at a 40% level. And that, excuse me, that's called the Full Funding Act that they passed in the past and just have not, have not fulfilled their obligation. So I talked to him about that. He said he felt as if the Full Funding Act may not happen right now or kind of in a little bind financially, but it won't go down. And he's committed, they're committed for that to continue to fund the special ed programming. And quite frankly, if you see how much school districts are spending locally and how much states are spending, the escalation is far exceeding what the feds are putting in. So that 13% may not actually be 13%, it's probably less because of the maintenance of effort of what school districts are having to put in. And of course, however much you spend one year, you have to at least spend that or more the next year out of local dollars. So it's a, it's a real impact on public schools. And you know, our focus is for our students to have max, max opportunity. And sometimes that, that means a lot more money per child. And we're ready to do that. And we set on go. We have a team that is prepared to serve our kids. But there are some other things that I won't waste your time on. I did thank him for the ESSR dollars and he laughed at me a little bit, but we did use those well. And he complimented us on how we used our federal funds. And he said he's proud of our, his, our district schools. We don't have any audit issues with how we use our funds and he was pleased with that. Other than that, I have a summary that I prepared for you and that I sent to him. So I'd be happy to share it with anybody else. But it was, it was a good opportunity at visiting with other superintendents across the country. I shared some of our real struggles, behaviors and things like that that we, that we work with every single day and find no relief. There's no state legislator or there's no federal legislator that has any answers either. It's hey, we hope you can do really well and go for it and work at it. And I shared some of those issues. And of course, he was very complimentary of the work that we do. But he also understands, especially for Margaret, his sister, that schools don't have the support and the finances that really they need in order to meet the needs of the kids. So he understood. I was proud with the opportunity to go. Did learn quite a bit from other superintendents, especially in our region. And we installed a new president and at some point I think I'll have some additional work to do with AAAS later. So it was a good time. So thank you very much for the opportunity for me to go. And I don't think I wasted, wasted any moments. Any questions about that? Well, thank you very much. Have Mr. Damon Donnell headed down? We've got a little, I'll set this up just a minute. Our governor has been reading a book, Oh, the Anxious Generation. Anybody in the house know about this? The Anxious Generation, I think is a pretty eye-opening book. Mr. Bell has read it and he and I have been talking about it and I just got my book today. So I'm going to start with that. But the Anxious Generation, the synopsis, it talks about screen time and negative effects on kids, rewires the brain. Well, our governor met with a certain group of superintendents and said, hey, if you're interested, we can find some money for an opportunity at, at pouching, pouching cell phones. Meaning keeping them away during the day. And I really think there's legislation that's prepared for school districts to have to heed this opportunity, have to do it. Maybe, maybe even a van on cell phones across the state. I'm not sure. That's just what I hear. I've not seen anything in person. But this grant is quite a bit of money. And come to find out, Dr. Melvin Brown, who's a friend of mine from Montgomery, Alabama, he and I have known each other for a while through a group by name called IEI. I just happened to find it last night while I was doing some research on some other things and saw him on the national news. And so I thought, this is a good opportunity. These are the Yonder Pouches that have been approved by the state as, as a vendor. So turn it over to you, Damon.
Okay, before we start tonight, we'd like to just show this quick video.
A new rule this year, their cell phones are banned. Teachers love the policy, students not surprisingly hate it. So what are parents saying? Marissa Para has the answer.
At Montgomery, Alabama's Carver High, the morning rush to school is now a morning rush to scroll.
Power your phone, oh!
New this year, middle and high school students now forced to lock away their phones before the bell rings.
When do they get it back?
2:45.
2:45?
Right.
Principal Gary Hall pushed for the policy and the pouch to enforce it.
They were texting, tweeting, you name it, while classes were going on.
Put it in the pouch, sir.
Here's how it works. At the beginning of the day, students put their cell phones in these pouches.
Once it's locked, it is really hard to get back open.
They can keep it with them. They just can't open them. They're sealed.
Y'all have a good day?
This unlocking magnet, the only thing designed to free them. It's not completely foolproof.
We found a lot of cellphone cases with no phone.
For students.
Show of hands, who doesn't like the pouch?
It's a painful adjustment.
I just love watching teeth talk, so I gotta have my phone.
Why don't you like the pouch?
I don't like the pouch. It's like when I'm in math class, I like to take pictures of the notes and stuff.
What's your favorite part?
We communicate more with each other now that I have my phone locked up.
It make me pay attention and I don't got my phone.
Who would be using their cellphone if it weren't for the pouch? That's a lot of hands. What would you be doing?
Cheating.
Montgomery Public Schools isn't alone. The maker of the pouch, Yonder, says they're seeing an estimated 150% increase in schools using them in 2023. Now working with over 2,000 schools across the country. While most parents are for the pouch, others fear their children will not have their phone when they need it most.
If there's an emergency, how can I contact my child?
At me, I'm in panic waiting until someone from the school calls and say, well, hey, there's a shooting.
It's been one week. Has it gone the way you thought it would?
Things are going really well.
District Superintendent Dr. Melvin Brown tells us the benefits are worth the risk.
We have to find a happy medium while at the same time, our ultimate goal is to make sure everybody is 100% safe as possible.
All right, so moving on.
Just one week in, this school is already seeing a difference.
I just see engagement. Honestly, I see talking. They're using their words.
It's revolutionized teaching for me this year.
Work gets done faster. We move along faster.
A new routine.
Things are locking, keep moving.
Educators hope will unlock their full potential. Marissa Para, NBC News, Montgomery, Alabama.
So that was a quick snapshot there as Dr. Cleveland mentioned earlier. Earlier this month, Governor Sanders and Secretary of Education Aliva sent a letter to the Arkansas superintendents urging them to join a new grant program focused on increasing access to mental health care for students and restricting in-school cellphone use. According to research, and this kind of blew my mind, I tried to think back when the girls were in high school and if they were really on this this much. And it says, "The average American teen spends five hours a day on social media." Five hours a day. Spending three or more hours a day on social media doubles a child's risk for mental health problems. So the average are spending more than that. To help address these issues, this grant program will provide pouches for students to safely store their phones during the school day, creating a better learning environment, encouraging a return to face-to-face conversations and socialization. This grant program will provide funding to all secondary schools that apply. And Springdale has approximately 12,400 secondary students, so that'd be sixth through 12th grade students. The state has pre-approved the use of Yonder cellphone pouches pictured on the screen there at a cost of $30 each. Therefore, if we move forward with this program, it would provide Springdale schools with approximately $400,000 in funding for this program. Tonight, we respectfully are requesting the board's approval to move forward with applying for this grant with the understanding that our district can opt out at any time. So if we get approved and we decide, they say, hey, here's a chunk of money for you to move forward this program, we can always back out of the program. So there's really nothing there. Any questions that you have? We started the process just brainstorming about, you know, some focus groups with our parents and students and just in feedback forums and just allowing everybody to have some voice in that so that we can hear what they have to think as well as that. And then also if we decide to move forward, how we're going to communicate that with folks. You know, what's the process of implementation? You saw those little things on the wall. You saw kids carrying those pouches just individually. We thought about installing those pouches in classrooms where there's a set of 30 in each classroom. And you know, it's just a, it's a simple open and close in each classroom setting. So instead of having kids carry them each way, there's lots of different ways to do it. Dr. Cleveland invited me to a meeting where they were speaking about just, other principals were throwing out ideas about how they were doing that. That really helped open my mind about, you know, just the, there's probably hundreds of ways that could be implemented, so.
Is there any feedback on the policing of it?
That would all be.
For teachers, is it more work for a teacher to?
Yeah, that would all be in just the implementation process. We'd have to write some type of procedural process for expectations for that, so.
Anything new, there's management in it?
I really liked on the video, that was the first time that I've seen, it's kind of a student managed, you know, they, they open and shut them. So that takes all that off the teacher. So I'm all for anything that just, you know, takes that off a teacher. I know, I've heard that.
But you can still use your watch.
I've heard that.
I've, I've read a few articles about it and they've, they see, one of the districts that I was reading about sees phones, watches and AirPods as one, right? So it all goes on that.
Sure. Think there'd have to be a lot of discussion about, you know, just exactly what you said, what, you know, is going to be left in there. Pretty, pretty roomy little pouch though to put quite a bit of stuff in there.
You know, it's pretty preliminary, but if we don't ask, we certainly won't get any money.
Sure.
So it's an opportunity to.
So I mean, you know, unfortunately, down in fourth and fifth grade, there's.
I think it'd be a great.
Do you have a better handle on that maybe?
I think this would allow us to kind of vet out all the issues. And if we decided to move that down, we could, it wouldn't be funded through the grant. But it would be certainly something that we could look at.
The grant's restricted to sixth, twelfth, eleventh.
Secondary schools, what they say. But they don't, they'll let you go to fifth if you had a fifth, five, six, seven, eight. Because they don't want you to split your school up and do, you know, these guys can't have phones, but your fifth graders can, something like that.
Yeah.
That's a good point though. Very good point. Any other questions?
So how do you make sure that it goes in there instead of a crate of cases?
Well, that's a good, that's a great question too. I don't think that we're to the point of how we're going to manage it. But again, like if we'd installed them in the classroom, that might be a teacher saying, okay, everybody go put your phone in here during this class period. And then at the end of that class period, she's just over there with that magnet unlocking those 30 devices, you know, like. those 30 devices, you know, like this quick. You know, you're talking a minute to unlock them on, then people get their cell phones out. You know, I've thought through this, COVID really made me think through this, if we do that, that way, you've got some kid, you know, that slobbers all over his phone, he's taking the pouch, and then, you know, you're not having an individual pouch, that's your pouch for germs and all that, so it's just a lot to think through, but I think that, you know, our team can do that for sure.
But once it's locked, the first time it's locked, it's locked all day.
Locked all day? Exactly right. That's, that's just the two different things. If you had a kid managing it, be locked all day. If you don't have it, if you install in classrooms, there could be time where they would, you know, have their cell phone to go to the next class, but then it's locked up for the next class. Exactly. Kind of defeats the purpose. Yep.
The good thing is, these aren't brand new. Yonder's have been around a little bit. There's lots of this practice out there, I'm sure, that we could talk to and.
Sure.
Sure we could do that.
Yeah, absolutely. That's the key right there.
So right now, we're just approving applying for the grant.
Correct. Yes, sir.
How move that we apply for the grant?
So I have a motion by Mr. Bell and a second by Mr. Owen B., approving the consideration for applying for the cellphone mental health AD grant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
We'll take the D.
That's worth it.
Yeah.
It keeps it out of the.
Good evening. That was actually a really good segue into my agenda item today. At the Lunch and Learn, I believe it was last month, we talked about the social media national litigation that is ongoing, that some of our neighbors have joined, that we have been approached about joining. As part of that conversation, we talked about how it's bigger than just social media, cell phones, and the responsibility there. So it's really timely that that grant is coming out. I think our whole team is now reading the anxious generation, getting up to speed on that. We still are planning to have a couple principals who have kind of piloted some different cellphone programs come talk to you next month, and then we'll continue to get the information on the pouches and what that might look like. So a lot is moving really quickly in this arena. My ask for you today is for approval for the district to officially enter into the social media litigation. As we talked about at the Lunch and Learn, my review of it, my conversation with other districts that are participating and with the attorneys that are representing the school districts, I feel like it's relatively low risk for our district and there could be some potential monies involved that we could put towards mental health support and other supports that may be needed for students that have and continue to battle social media issues. Do you have any questions?
So one of the things that I noticed when I was reading through what you sent us was there's regardless of settlement amount or zero settlement, there's no cost to the district.
That's correct. Unless we exited the lawsuit early for some reason, then we would have to pay some of the costs and fees associated with it. But yes, that's one of the reasons that my view makes it relatively low risk for the district.
Anybody else?
I'll make a motion to move forward with moving into the social media litigation.
Motion by Mr. Hutchinson and a second by Mrs. Cook, approving entering into the social media litigation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Dr. Cleveland, in your board packet, you had the June financial statement. With our revenue, I wanted to direct you to that first. We came in a little bit ahead of what our budgeted amounts were. The only one that is, appears to be lower is the National Board stipends. That's just an estimate that we do at the beginning of the year, but whatever amount that is paid out is what we receive from the state. So that would really read 100% everything that we paid out. We also collected in revenue from the state to offset that amount. As far as the expenditures, we were again a little bit below budget on our expenditures overall. There were some categories that we were a little bit higher, some a little bit lower, but as an average, we were under budget. Of course, you also have your check register was attached with your financial statements. So are there any questions?
I'll take a motion.
Make a motion that we accept the June financials as presented.
So I have a motion by Mrs. Cook and a second by Mr. Ramos to approve the June financial statements as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
And then portion of my section, I'm going to defer to Dr. Cleveland.
Sure. So months ago, we discussed purchasing, what we call the ASP building, we were now closed on that facility. And our efforts, collective efforts, was to maybe pick out one or two pieces of property that we don't sell those to try to meet the financial obligations. So our policy states this, that we market those properties and get, I lost my words, but to make sure that we get full funding for that.
Fair market value?
Fair market value, yeah. Lost my words there for a moment. We can do that two ways. You can, you can market it through a Realtor or whatever and make it out there, because oftentimes, as we've seen today, you get more than you ask for, strangely enough. Or you can do sale bids. Well, we've done sale bids in the past, but in this market, it seems to be more appropriate to market it more than a high-end property, have people show it, see it, because some people might miss those advertisements. So our policy says we have to do that in two weeks. And so I would just like your permission, if it's still okay, to go ahead and market that property. And, you know, there are real estate agents out there that want to take their folks and hand by, and so we welcome them to do that. Would we like your permission to do this? Okay? Which property? I didn't want to unilaterally do it without asking you. I don't know that you have to have action on it, but I didn't want it to, I didn't want to do it without your permission.
What's property?
Okay, the property is, I'm glad you asked, on Don Tyson and George Anderson Road. It's 28.1 acres, Jeremy?
Two acres, or else that.
Two acres, okay. Well, there you go.
Thirty acres or whatever.
Yeah, and the interesting thing about that property is, I think, with the real need for housing and all, some people like to develop, which would help us. Which would help us.
Can you give us a school right where your cell phone is?
We could at times. I mean, the good thing is just right down the road, we have the 40 acres of Don Tyson School of Innovation, so there is a future opportunity there. And it's actually more than that, it's more than 28. Of course, no action can be taken as far as selling it unless it comes to you for approval. So it would be.
That would be.
I need your, I need your approval to sell it, but I don't need your approval to market it. I just want to make sure that we're still all on the same page.
We have our approval to market it anyways.
I just wanted it to be public.
Perfect. Is it just too close to Harp and other schools? Is that, is that the kind of reasoning why we wouldn't want it for a future building?
Part of the reason, the property was a good purchase years ago, but it's likely too small and there's a lot of earthwork that would need to be done to really build a school there. But that's not really the main purpose for selling it, it's to generate the funding to pay for the other facility. We do have other properties across the, across the district that could support a school. For example, if, if we continue to have increases in student population out to the east, we do have Sonora, which isn't full, but we have Turnbo, which likely is, but Turnbo was built in a way that we could add to if necessary. So we have some options in the future, if we really do grow, that doesn't require us to build a fully school.
Thank you.
Thank you, board. We'll get on that and see how that goes.
All right, board. Dr. Cleveland, I've got a construction update. And first, I wanted to start out on the district roof repairs and replacements that we've been working on for, it's almost been two years since we had the hail damage, so we've completed 12 facilities and we still have six facilities that's under construction right now. Those will finish up in the next few weeks. JB Hunt and Archer probably will still have a little bit of work on gutters and downspouts when school starts, but then we'll be finished up with that project. Springdale High School, we're on track over there. They've done some extra work since we took these photos, but the plan right now, all the concrete's done, they've started the fencing today, the perimeter fencing on that and the mulch on the north end, and then they're prepping for the parking lot, the new asphalt to be put down, and that's set to be finished on August 6th. So it'll be ready for our back-to-school event.
Has there been any movement or update on closing that section of the road there on the north?
No, I've got all the documentation pulled together. I've just got to meet with Patsy, Christie, and move forward. We're just trying to get all the schools opened up and probably in September. This is the multipurpose field, it's complete. There's a, the retaining wall on the west side is complete, they got the dirt and everything, all the elevations finished yesterday, so they're taking down the fence there to the north. It'll all be down this week. The tennis courts, we had an issue with the sidewalks that was poured between the courts, so that's all tore up right now. They're going to pour one lift of concrete this week and then two more lifts next week, and then that'll be completed, and then they'll go right into putting the seal coat and the striping on the tennis courts.
We're not having to pay for that?
No, the subcontractor made a mistake when they poured it, so they're having to redo it. But it's, it's on track. That, that mistake, it will be right at the start of school when we get this done on the tennis courts. But we're working with the coach, they've got some tennis matches he had set for the 12th move to Harbor to give us an extra week or so to finish this up. You guys have any questions on Springdale High? Okay. So at Southwest, the city's over there doing their inspections. This is in the media center looking back to the east, the counseling wall, they've got some wallpaper put up. This is the office, they've got the wallpaper, the carpet, all the desks built. We started putting furniture in it yesterday and we'll continue putting furniture in all of this week. And then next week, we'll start putting in all of the band and the choir furniture and risers and storage. This is upstairs looking over the media center. They've got all of the sound panels in, lighting's in. This is back on the learning stairs looking back at the stage. They still have a little bit of work to finish up on the stage, but it's, it's really coming together. They've got about two-thirds of the other building down on the ground and hauled off. They've got all the curbs in for the front parking on the, on the east side. They've got all the sidewalks cut in, they were putting gravel in those today and have them formed up. That'll be completed by the time school starts. Back parking lots all completed, so they're, they're on track over there. Curtis and a few of his team members are in it this week helping get the furniture in the right places and, and we're hanging, hanging all the.
Fencing that separates.
So we're working with Shiloh to replace the fence between Shiloh's bus shop and their school and our school. And then when we do that, we're going to replace some other fencing on the east side of the football field and, and it is in really bad shape, so we're going to try to get all that redone and stuff right after school starts.
They've been good partners with us.
Yeah, yeah, Shiloh's been great. We're partnering there like a 50/50 to replace the boards, because they want a nice, nice fence there also. We are putting in a lot of electronics and stuff we started yesterday, so we should have all that installed probably by tomorrow, but, but it's going good, on track. You guys have any questions on Southwest? Okay. Central, they've made a lot of progress. We took these photos on Monday morning. So this is actually the kitchen cafeteria part of the slab, and today they've got a bunch of red ironed up on that. Where the CMU blocks are, that's some locker rooms, and they've actually got roof trusses on those today. So they've made a lot of progress on that. This is the locker room, so they actually have the trusses and everything there. They, they've made a lot of progress on that also. They're doing the punch list on phase one that we moved into spring break. Bobby and them are working on that, they'll have most of that completed by the time school starts. On the 24th, we'll have the gym floor company in, they're going to be putting the striping on the auxiliary gym, vinyl coat on that, and then they're going to make the repair on the main gym, and then we'll have that for the coaches to be able to get on it before school starts. Okay. George Elementary, this is in the gym and looking over into the cafeteria, it's got these roll-up doors where you can divide it off, where you can open it up and the kids can go between the cafeteria and the gym. So this is, and this picture was took Monday morning too, so it, they've made some progress on it, but it is the, the old cafeteria, which is going to become the library. So we took out the stage, it's going to have some offices there, so they're, they're making a lot of progress on that. So in the old, the original school, they painted all of the walls. We've got all the sprinkler tops put into the classrooms, all the ceiling tiles put back in, everything's been insulated, and they're probably 90% buttoned up on the rest of the school. They'll finish that this week. So this is the kitchen. So in the kitchen, we're having to switch, the freezer and cooler had to move to opposite side of the kitchen, serving lines had to move, so we had to cut this floor out, dig in the, and put all the plumbing and power into the right places and pour it back. So this actually has an epoxy coating. They finished it yesterday, so tomorrow they'll be able to get on it. They're going to put all the ceiling tile and all the duct work in, and then on Thursday, freezer and cooler will start going in, and then the, all the kitchen equipment will follow right up behind that. So they'll make a lot of progress on that.
So is all that stuff stored somewhere?
Yeah, we've got everything on site. We've got stuff in our warehouse, they've got stuff in Conexes. So we've had stuff for Southwest stored at a lot of other schools, and so we started Monday actually taking everything to Southwest to finish that up, and then we'll roll right into George later this week. But it's going good, all the, all the paving's completed, they've got a little bit of sidewalks we're doing in the front where it used to flood, we're fixing that while we're in there, but it's on schedule too.
It's probably one of the most ruthless construction efforts in the country for our funds.
So probably doing as much at one time as some people do their whole career.
It's, it's been a busy summer.
That's true. That's true. We're going to do next year.
I don't know. I'm sure we have something planned.
Oh, we got some stuff.
Yeah.
We've got some elementary work to do, as you know, we've applied for approval anyway. We've just got to figure out how to play our part.
Okay. Thank you. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Valerie Hannah, and I am the S E A president and a teacher here in Springdale. Um, it's been, it has been a rough month since I've seen you last, and I know Callie was able to come last month in my place, um, but some good things have happened, so A E A through N E A was able to provide some relief funds for our members who were affected by the tornadoes, um, in ways that were not covered by insurance, so, for example, myself, we had no power at the house for multiple days, and we were able to submit, um, reimbursement for the gas to run the generator, which is not always covered, you know, by insurance or at least not until further in the future, so that's a really nice, nice benefit that we were able to have. Um, we also had multiple members have voiced concerns about the Oklahoma Bible mandate that was brought by their state superintendent. Um, I pointed out to them that at this time, that it's not really something that we need to be concerned with, um, because it's not an issue for Arkansas yet. Um, however, I think when any of our members or any of our educators in Springdale has a concern about something, that, you know, it's important to voice it at the front end and not be like, wait, 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 I was concerned about that. So just to, you know, put it out there that there has been some concern about the mandate part of it, um, at the very least. Um, yeah, I feel like I'm just bringing not awesome information. So, also, uh, A E A was one of the big, uh, supporters of the state Arkansas Educational Rights Act petition, um, and I know last month, Callie really pointed out that we feel really blessed to be in a place like Springdale where we have no fear to sign a petition and we have the ability to voice our opinion and we're not afraid to stand up here and do it. And on July fifth, um, we found out that those fears are all too real for a lot of people in Arkansas. Um, myself, Callie, and several of our A E A members who were actually in Philadelphia for the national conference were also on a Zoom call where they had to make the decision whether or not to even turn petitions in because we did not hit that, or they did not hit the, the ninety-one thousand, um, signatures needed. And I was one of the people saying, no, my vote counts, my, my, my signature counts, you've gotta turn them in, you've gotta put them in there, and ultimately, they decided, and after hearing all the other people that were on the call, that they were, there were people that were afraid for their jobs, there were people that were notaries, that were afraid to lose their position, and, and I, it, it, it's not something I imagined before this last month, so I want to again say how blessed and grateful we are for you, because it's, it's getting weird out there, y'all. Um, so, that also being said, while we were at the national conference and, you know, Callie had come in, she said, because I was looking through her notes, that she talked with you guys about how excited she was for going and what a new experience it was gonna be, and man, was it a new experience for all of us, because on day two, uh, the staff decided to go on strike. And we were met on the convention floor with our cell phones all going off, saying, get out of the convention center, go back to the hotel, we don't cross picket lines. And in my mind, especially being in a state that doesn't do strikes, it was like, I don't know what these guys are talking about, it's like, it's not the Bob, but I was a little wrong. Um, so we got out, we got back to the hotel, at that point, conference was now over, they tried for a couple hours to bring them back to the table, but it just didn't happen in time, so we essentially became, uh, tourists in Philadelphia, so the Liberty Bell, and we got to take a ride on the Delaware River and a cruise, and we did a lot of fun stuff. Um, Callie and I personally, however, also ended up having to change hotel rooms because some of the strikers figured out where we were at and they were knocking on doors. Um, one of our members from Mountain Home actually was threatened, and I went, oh, that's a thing, I didn't know that was a real thing, but it is a real thing, and it kinda makes me sad, because I feel like my job as an educator is to make people better and to help them succeed and go forward in life, and it, it kinda felt like a very helpless situation. Now, that being said, to go back to what was Callie said about being excited, I'm gonna brag on her a lot, because one of the things that we do at these conventions is we use rubber tools of order and add a lot of information for someone who's never actually done it before, and positions and, and counter positions and, and all the little things, or when you're allowed to speak and not speak, and she did it, she really dove into whatever she was wanting to discuss with, um, with our delegation and stood up and was able to do it correctly, and so she definitely deserves a little round of applause. Now, all of that yuckiness aside, um, S E A is actually very excited that we're gonna be able to provide lunch for the new teachers', um, orientation and help welcome all the new teachers to the district, um, and also, you know, only, only having a lesser number this year, a lot more manageable for, for making sure everybody gets enough lunch, so hopefully, uh, that will be an exciting entrance to Springdale, and I am excited that I am still, and hopefully in, in the future forever be a special teacher, so, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, there's nothing on there. Nobody here.
miscellaneous transfers?
Anybody have anything else?
Committee reports.
What's that?
Committee reports.
Yeah. Meeting adjourned. Thanks for being here.